Twenty-two city council meeting for the city of Lamar. I'm Mayor Kirk Kresman. Over the last week, one of the great things we've done is exciting things that we've released was our new city app. Now, the city app, we talked about it before, that it's a, it's going to have a listing with the directory of all the different businesses and organizations in the city of Lamar. It'll also give you different resources as far as your emergency services, a hospital, a college, and so on. But more importantly, it'll also work with you as far as giving you alerts on what's happening in the city of Lamar, whether it's a outage or areas you need to avoid because of construction. So we encourage you, please, if you have an opportunity and you haven't done it yet, please download it, look for it in the Google App Store or in the Apple App Store and see if you can find it there, just looking for the city of Lamar. With that said, we will move on to our meeting. We have a fairly light meeting tonight, but hopefully we can get through that. So it looks like we have Jaylen. Will you be doing our invitation?
Yep.
Father, we want to thank you and praise you for, for your love and your mercy upon us. Father, we thank you for our city council having meetings where, where we can come and find out what's happening and, and what we need to be doing. Father, we ask now for your wisdom and guidance upon our city council. Give them insight as they discuss the, the matters of business tonight. Help them to make the best decisions for our city in the future days. Father, we thank you for them. We thank you for our, our workers here in our city and how you work with them and to keep us a nice city. So Father, we ask your special blessing and protection upon our city and upon our people in it, and we thank you and praise you for your work. We do this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Jerry, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in the land, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the time is now seven oh three P.M. I'll call the meeting ordered. Roll call.
Joe Gonzalez.
Here.
Mike Bellamy.
Here.
Jerry Jenkins.
Here.
Kirk Kresman.
Here.
Oscar Riley.
Here.
Manuel Temez.
Here.
Anne Marie Crampton.
Here.
Rob Evans.
Here.
Kristen Swartz.
Here.
Lance Clark.
Here.
Okay, we've all had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. Were there any items we needed to separate or vote on separately?
We approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
A second.
You have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Are there any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
unanimous in favor of?
Okay, the, this portion of the meeting is for audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject that does not appear on the agenda. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each, and that is at the discretion of the council. Is there anybody here tonight that would like to speak to the council on an item? Okay, if you'd like to come up and just let us know your name and address for the record.
Thanks, guys. Bill Becker, Mayhew Heights. Set my timer. So the reason I'm here is just to share information with the council. My wife Sheri and I have been working on that business down south by Little Caesar's, and I just want to, like, just update you on where we're at. So we've been working on it for about a year. It's 1205 South Main, and it was 1984, 85 when, that was actually where my mom rented VHS tapes in the eighties. You remember VHS, VCR, so, hi, Mom. And when we're done, we're hoping to open September 1. We're going to have three to four full-time hairdressers and one nail tech. It's going to be ADA accessible, which is, we're excited about that. And we're also proud to say that over the past year, if, if we could buy it in town or if we could order it, we bought it here. And we did that for service, service and quality. And also carpenters and tradesmen that we hired, they live here. So we're, we're proud to say that. I would say 99% of what we spent stayed here in Lamar. Like, again, we're, we're hoping to open September 1. The biggest hurdle we're having now, we talked about, was paving, but we'll get through that. I think I'm going to try and just postpone that until Castle Rock gets through, hopefully within the next 20 months. Yeah, that's, so no, that's Sheem. Sheem is the general, is the project manager for Castle Rock Construction, and he's, he informed me that 20 months would be a, a good estimate for finishing up. So they're going to put a couple new aprons, and then I believe Mr. Brooks had a grant for new sidewalk, ADA sidewalk through there. So I think we're going to try and just postpone the paving until, until we get to that point. So also, I would encourage any council member that's out there, if you, if you're out and about and you see Sheri and I there, feel free, and, and if you're out there, feel free to stop in, take a look, make comments on social media. We're excited, we're nervous, and like I say, by September 1, we're open to have five full-time employees in there. So I will, two minutes, 29 seconds, I'll stop. Do you guys, you guys have any questions for me?
What's the name of the business?
Sheri's Seascape Salon. So we went to Destin, Florida, she fell in love with it, she said, you know, so she put a beach theme, so come and take a look. Sheri's Seascape Salon. Hopefully the sign will be up middle of next week. Yes, full-service men and women. Yes, absolutely.
Well, that's great. Thank you for doing that and also for getting local contractors. That's, that's great that you're putting that reinvestment back into the community, for sure. We appreciate that, for sure.
Absolutely. All right, thanks, guys.
All right. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the council?
Can we help you maybe?
Somebody waxed himself on the table.
Just a little bit, I don't want you to hit that. No, you go for it. Go back without me breaking it. You help? I don't want to break it. Ask my wife. You will? There we go. Technology.
I think I can handle if it fell on me. Hello again, council. My name is Brent Bates of Lamar, Colorado. I want to reiterate that on July 7th, my attorney had sent an email to the city clerk and city attorney asking for some questions to be answered. I was here at city council July 25th. With those questions, I gave you all packets with the rejection letters and with our speech and our questions. Last Wednesday, I spoke with the city minister, administrator, Rob Evans at the, towards the end of the city council breakfast and was assured that I would be getting a response by the end of day Wednesday, and I am still here without a response. So I'm, I'm, I'm asking, when am I going to be getting that response?
I sent it to your attorney on Wednesday.
Okay, he has not received it as of today at 5:00 P.M. So can I, can you tell me what email you, you sent it to?
The one that I received from him when he sent me an email several months ago.
Okay, so I will check with him again and have him double-check his email folder. Thank you for getting us that response, and if it's not there, I guess I'll see you again in two weeks. Thank you.
If he wants, if you don't, if he doesn't receive it for some reason, if he emails me requesting it again, I'll send it to whatever other email that he might have.
Can you go ahead and forward to my email that you have as well, please?
You have an attorney, so I can't send it, I can't have communication directly with you.
I'll have him reach out, talk to you then. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak with on a topic that's not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the city treasurer's report. Kristen?
Good evening, council and mayor. You have in your packet the second quarter 2022 financial report. If you have any questions, I'd like to point out a couple highlights. I don't have any major concerns at this point. Our salary increases didn't go in until July, so you won't see those in here yet. But we did have a few good things that I wanted to point out. Our fuel sales for the airport are higher than we anticipated. As of today, we have taken in 351,347 dollars and 10 cents in fuel sales, and we had budgeted 386,000. So I'm encouraged about that. That's a new fund. We're just, we don't have a lot of history in it yet. This is all new for the city of Lamar, but I was encouraged by those numbers as I did the second quarter financials, so I'm excited about that. We're working on some of the mechanic services income. We've got some new employees in place and some that we just hired, so I'm excited to watch that revenue go up as well as we start providing more of those services as well. So I just did want to point those out. That out is good news and the financials, so, but I would entertain any questions or comments.
Okay, I don't see anything offhand. Do you guys have any questions?
Where about? Where about where you figured we would be?
Yes, sir.
Overall budget?
I think so, yeah. I think we're looking good. I'm, water revenue is a little bit down, which concerns me. Expenditures are up right now in that, in that fund, so I need to do some more research on it. Water's always is my baby, I guess, so I, I keep a close eye on it. But it, you know, that was the only concern I really had, that kind of trying to understand why the revenues were a little bit down, but other than that overall, I was, it's about exactly where I thought it should.
Do you think the rain or the increase of brown yards in the city?
Could be either. Okay. Seeing that there's no other questions for the city treasurer, we will move on to the city clerk.
Well, I actually have two things this evening. I've given an updated copy of the revenue report. It should be in front of everyone. The 2020 figures were not replaced with the 2021 figures for the month, so it showed our percent of difference at like 18%, where we're actually at only 8.5%. But we're still looking good for the year. So our June sales and use tax collected in July was 452,290 dollars and 42 cents, which was up 8.5% or 33,693 dollars and 48 cents from 2021. Our year-to-date collections were 2,881,858 dollars and 97 cents, which is up 2.45% or 68,865 dollars and 45 cents from 2021. So again, we're still looking good. And then I have another item in front of you is a letter. So I provided you a copy of my certification showing sufficiency of the letter petition submitted by the group of registered electors to have a ballot question on the November 8th, 2022 election. The question that will be presented to the voters will be in reference to amend the current city of Lamar charter by adding a chapter six, excuse me, 15 prohibiting operation of marijuana establishments, marijuana cultivation facilities, marijuana product manufacturing facilities, marijuana testing facilities, and retail and wholesale marijuana stores. I will also be forwarding a certificate of sufficiency to the group for their records. And the only other thing, at this time, the question has not been created that will go on the ballot, and it will be brought to council in the form of an ordinance for everyone to review. Are there any questions for me?
Yes. On, on the, that we went to court with, wasn't the required percentage signatures different?
That was for an initiative. This is a charter amendment, and they were only required to get 5% of the registered voters.
Okay.
It was for the differences, the charter amendment versus municipal code.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to cover all paces.
Thank you for asking.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for the city clerk? Seeing none, we will move on to the city administrative report.
Hey, a month ago, we brought up that we were going to start highlighting departments and giving a, a report to the council on their actions, and as you've noticed, our guys have been really, really busy in the fire department lately, so I asked the, the fire department to be the first one to step up and give a little bit of rundown about what some of the things they've been doing lately, and I know we included a, a couple of pictures and stuff, like you guys said you liked the last one, but would you like to talk about, look at the haircut, could you?
Mayor, council, fire department's been extremely busy so far this year. We're running more calls with less people. I think that's the common cry every time you guys hear from us, unfortunately. We are actively seeking one engineer still. We did get one hired thanks to the new pay scale, I believe. He starts the 23rd, I believe it is, will be his first shift. Since salary survey, we've learned that we've become competitive with places like Pablo Roll Fire. I saw Vale Fire hiring a couple weeks ago. We are competitive with Vale Fire now, so that's very encouraging. We appreciate all the hard work on that. Hopefully that'll help us become a destination department and not a stepping stone to a bigger department. Ambulance, running the wheels off the ambulances, I'm sure you guys hear sirens day and night, doesn't matter, we're running more and more calls. We're currently one paid staff short, and we're about 10 volunteers right now. We can always use more volunteers, so if you know anybody who likes getting up in the middle of the night and running up and down the highway and seeing whatever we see, send them our way, please. I can't think of anything else right now. There, you see all the guys out training on Monday nights. So every Monday night, we're still doing trainings, a couple hours. We get all the workpeople out. Last week, they were doing high-angle rescue training. I'm not sure what they're doing tonight, but please stop by. Fridays, we have breakfast, come by, say hi to the guys, they appreciate it. Rob makes it a point to stop by and have coffee and bacon, so there's always coffee and bacon at least. They would appreciate it. They like seeing faces and telling stories and what's going on around them. That's about all I have right now.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
I have a question.
Oh.
Is your Monday night training, is that for a group that's getting, going through firefighter one or firefighter two?
Not yet. Right now, it's just regular department training. We're trying to get a fire one training set up to go between the EMT classes. It's kind of a struggle right now because nobody wants to throw on 100 pounds of gear when it's 105 degrees outside, so we're trying to plan one either this fall or early in the spring between the EMT classes, and then we will start working on getting some people state certified again. Thank you. You're welcome. Anybody else? Great, thank you.
All right. Coffee with Rob. This week, we'll be going to Lamar Truck Plaza. Next week is Hickory House and Pit Stop and Dunkin' Donuts. We have the Sand and Sage Fair on August the 6th through the 13th. I have a list of other events here, let me see. On August the 9th is Family Night, including ping pong ball drop for kids, and that starts at 5:00 P.M. We have Kids Day on August the 10th, that's, that starts at 9:00 A.M. and goes to noon. August 11th and 12th, we have the FFA, FFA Breakfast at 6:00 A.M. to 9:00 A.M. in the Home Ec Building. August 12th and 13th, barbecue at 5:00 P.M., the PRCA Rodeo, 7:00 P.M. And on the 12th, also the Chancy Williams Concert Fall and Rodeo, I guess it's a big one. And the Sand and Sage Fair Parade's 10:00 A.M. on the 13th. August the 20th is the Lamar Chamber of Commerce Farmers Market, and August the 19th to the 20th is the Fourth Annual Downtown Custom and Classic Expo. I think we're going to talk about that one in just a second. Yes, well, that's Friday, the 19th, 5:30 to 10:00, and Saturday, August 20th, 6:30 in the morning to 4:00 P.M. Let me see, we needed to ask the council, council dinner, is that correct, the next one, September the 7th? Did you guys have a preference or any place that we could go to?
Black Vice.
Yeah.
Or is this another, was it, have we done two breakfasts in a row? We have? Okay.
We have. And we could stay with the breakfast, it's up whatever the council would like to do this time. Are there any preferences or? Yeah.
The last one was La Rices, wasn't it?
Or was it Becky's? No, La Rices.
Yeah.
Becky's was before that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And we did La Lupita's before, and I can't remember where else we've done, but. So.
You want to, any, any place I can, you want to go try and find out and see, you know, about the Max?
Can we just have a catered dinner in the park?
We sure could.
I had a thought about even possibly highlighting one of our departments and doing something in one of the departments, like maybe like the library and inviting people to come to the library and meet with the council and.
An event center?
Well, I just meant so we could see the library or bring people to the library, but we could do the community cultural events too. But the park, depending on the weather, I guess, that would be the only.
Let me look into.
A few options and bringing back.
I will do that at the next meeting.
Okay.
All right. Projects update. I guess we're starting back on the Washington, the drainage project. We've got several big leaks. I don't know if you guys noticed, our guys are around a lot with all the big wind knocking down some more limbs. We've had a lot of limb cleanup. Those guys have been really, really busy, wanted to say thanks to Pat and all those workers out there. Rick has a lot of guys out there, too. The LCC dorm project has been full speed, curb and gutter on Anderson Street, so that's just some of the project updates. You guys have any questions on, anything I can come back to you on or give you a call about?
Water leak on Main Street. Can we get Pat?
Yeah.
Narrow down on what's.
You know, where on Main Street?
Down in front of Cow Palace.
Oh, that's the one that we just, we're talking about them working on. It's the Cow Palace on Wednesday night, so that's when we're going to be working on that. And miscellaneous, did you guys have any other not projects that you question?
Pretty late, because I think, did he say that they have to close the businesses, right?
I, yeah, we're going to try and, I think, give them a notice to say we want to do it when everybody's least affected by that. I think there's only going to be two. I don't know if he's, but I think there's only going to be a few affected by that, because we're going to cut it off at a point where it's not going to affect all of them out that way.
Okay.
But we will minimize that.
We're still rolling on.
Yeah.
We'll talk. Yeah.
But that's all there. Thank you very much.
All right, so with that said, we will move on to the reports and correspondence from the council. Do we have any council liaison reports?
I don't have anything. I don't have anything.
Mike?
I'm vacating.
Anne Marie?
Oh. Just want to make sure everybody knows that if you're interested in shaping our future, Powers County, future, that you consider looking at the position announcements for the associate director and project coordinator at, for Powers Economic Prosperity. Those job descriptions are live on their powers.p, no, powerspep.org website.
Do you have a closing date on, on applications for that?
One? Middle of this month.
Okay. And they could also find it on the new Lamar app?
Yes, yes.
Under PC or P.
Yes.
And then they'll look into the, or into the job section?
Yes, well, it's on the homepage, actually, for.
Okay.
More effect.
Great.
And Anne Marie, what was the second person, associate director and?
Project coordinator.
Thank you.
And we, we will hire one of those positions.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? All right, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our new business. The first item on the agenda for new business is to discuss and possibly approve a letter of support for a conservation reserve program, the CRP program. This is initiated, I had Jelaine Hickson, who visited with me, and I brought it up to Rob, Robert Evans to discuss, and so we invited her here tonight to talk to us about what she's working on, and glad you could join us.
Thank you, mayor, and good evening, council. A picture says a thousand words, so I'm going to hand out a few, few handouts. You may have already seen, it was an attachment to a letter that I've been working towards, but I don't know, do all of you understand what CRP is? Conservation Reserve Program? And if I can elaborate on that, I'll, I'll just digress for a moment. I don't know if you realize, the Dust Bowl was man-made. It was caused in the 1920s when the government put in provisions for the eastern settlers to come out west, and if you were to come out west and you could stake 160 acres, and if you stayed on that land for five years, you were given the deed. So the droves of thousands came out to Colorado, Oklahoma, Kansas, Texas, and New Mexico. But they had to make a living, so they started farming. They went and they plowed up all of the natural grasses that had been there for thousands of years, where the wind is always blown, from 20 miles an hour to 110 miles an hour, the wind was always blowing, but when they, they broke out that ground, they caused the Dust Bowl. In the 1930s, in the Dirty 30s, President Roosevelt signed the Soil Conservation Act as a remedy to get this ground under control, to put the ground back to its natural grasses and quit farming it. And through the years, Pat, almost a century now, the USDA has had programs that enticed farmers to not farm sensitive soils. And in, and in this region, as you well know, we have very sensitive soils, and it's more like brown powder. So a few years ago, the Trump administration set the rates for CRP. They cut the rates for CRP in the Dust Bowl region and primarily right here in Powers County. In the 1990s, our CRP rates were 90, excuse me, were 50, nearly $50 an acre. And what the, you know, and what they are today, what they're offering today in 2022 is only $13 an acre. That is, and that has completely de-incentivized farmers to participate. And not only continue to re-enroll, but farmers all throughout this region, all surrounding Lamar, are, are parcels of CRP, from small parcels to maybe 100 acres to 10,000s of acres, that farmers, as we speak, are breaking out. They're going to plow it, and when they break out CRP, it requires aggressive tilling. You probably have to plow it four times to get rid of all of the growth that we've worked so hard 50-some years to, to grow, to get that vegetation on there. So they're going to break it out. Why would they do that? Well, because for $13 an acre, it doesn't pay. You can, if you go in and you get this ground ready to plant, and it's still too dry to, to plant, you can insure it for prevent plant. That means it's too dry. It's too dry to plant it. You can, you can recover $120 an acre. So who's going to take $13 an acre? Very few farmers will do that. And if you did go ahead and plant it and it failed because of the drought, you can recover through crop insurance $172 an acre, and if the, and if it, if we're blessed with rain, we can yield up to $200 to $300 an acre. So these rates that the CR, that the USDA is currently offering right here in Powers County, in some areas, and some are at 13, and some are at 27, and some are at 30, but it is giving the incentive for, it is de-incentivizing the farmers to, to re-enroll in CRP. I'm here to warn you, we're approaching the Dirty 30s, the 2030s, because when this land is all broke out, it's going to blow, it always does. Even this past January, February of this year, we had 100, 130 mile per hour winds. We all tasted the dirt, and it's going to get worse. So I approached the mayor a few weeks ago, and I asked him if we could have a letter of support to send. to send to the highest levels of our, um, USDA, Colorado, or the USDA Secretary Tom Bilzak, as well as the national offices for the Farm Service Agencies, as well as other people, uh, other congressmen in the US Senate and the US Representatives on the ag committees, that this is a perverse anomaly. And what's more insulting to it is that in the eastern, and it's in one of those handouts there, you can see, in the eastern states where drought has never existed, the CRP rate is $311 an acre. 25 times the, the, the rate that's paid in the Dust Bowl.
Do you know why? Is there a reason why?
So I've had many conversations with the FSA officials in, um, our state and regional offices. And it has my, the CRP program migrated to wildlife habitat, which is okay. It's, you know, it works hand in hand, but they started basing the rates on soil rental rates. And in my opinion, that's completely, pardon me, backwards. They need to align the rates with the highest erodibility, not real estate values. Because even in the eastern states, they can grow two crops a year. They have rich fertile soil and it is important to preserve some of the wildlife habitat and that's very important. But they, they do raise about two crops a year, back to back. In our region, you can only raise one crop every other year. You have crop rotation so that you are not abusing the soil and getting it to blow. And you always wanna keep it covered with the previous crop stubble or whatever you can cover crops. And so it has evolved to this perverse situation where they are establishing the rates according to real estate values instead of the original purpose of the program, which was to prevent the soil erosion, the Dust Bowl. And so, um, I, I've just been incensed about it. It's almost like throwing away 100 years of good work. Even USDA soil scientists, um, have written many articles that when you lose one inch of topsoil, it takes 500 years to, for that to rebuild. And I can assure you that our topsoil throughout Prowers County and throughout the Dust Bowl region has not been rebuilt, not in the last 50, 60, 100 years. It, it takes a long, long time for that to come back. And yet we're going with these rates as low as they are. Farmers, they don't have much option. They've gotta pay the taxes on it and pay all the other and they're gonna break it out. And they, they're forced to make economical decisions versus ecological. And, uh, we are headed into an ecological disaster. And even with good farming practices that we've used in the last century to improve it, it's still just not going to be enough. So with that in mind, I, I came to the council asking for a letter of support to, um, include with my package to the, um, the various government officials.
I know you'd, um, asked Brittany to print out a copy of that letter. You should have the two different letters, one to Tom Vilasak and one to Zach Dutchenrow. This would be the letter that was, that she's asking for approval for the mayor to sign on behalf of the city, so we can get that submitted to the USDA for support. And this was something that I brought up also to, uh, Senator Hickenlooper's office about the concerns with, um, the drought and the Dust Bowl style of environment that we're leaning into after years and years of working towards trying to prevent this type of erosion in our soil conservation programs that we've had in place for 100 years, that now we're starting to see the effects of it, um, dwindle away and that it's changed. And I really noticed it, um, like you were saying, back in January, when on national news, it showed this big cloud on the radar that the dust, the dust cloud was so large in southeast Colorado, um, south of Lamar, that it was actually showing on national radar. So I think this is something that we probably need to address at some point. And that's why I think I wanted to invite Jelaine in to bring this up to the council. Now, you have met with the county commissioners, is that right?
Yes, and they did, um, they did provide a letter in support of, uh, the issue or, or expressing their displeasure, I guess, and, uh, with the CRP rates and agreeing that the CRP rates need to be increased in order to protect our, our rural communities as well as urban. And, uh, also I've met with the, um, Prowers County Soil Conservation District. I think their letter will be forthcoming later this week. And also a few other, um, agriculture organizations are contemplating, uh, getting a, a, a letter out at their next board meeting. So it could be a week, could be a few more weeks. But it is imperative that we really get this message home because the deadlines for farmers to accept or reject the 10-year contracts, some of them are 15, um, is September 1st. So within the next few weeks, farmers will be making these decisions. And that's another point I'd like to make. At the rate that they're offering at Prowers County, $13 an acre in 15 years is gonna be like a dollar. I mean, I, everywhere you look at this, it's just so insane. And, uh, so I really do hope that we can generate as much attention to this issue because we don't wanna be breathing all this dirt and I, I, one of the handouts is, uh, does off of the map of where my family farm, our CRP is located, and it's just south of the high school. And I am having a horrible moral, economical war in my head. What's the right thing to do? And I hope that the, I can't bear the thought to break that out, but on the other hand, it's, it's silly for me not to. And, uh, I think all other farmers are probably having the same, same, um, thought process going through their head. But I know my neighbors right as we speak, they are plowing up their CRP.
This includes Kansas and Oklahoma too, this price?
Excuse me?
It's $13 an acre. That also includes Kansas and?
It varies by county and sometimes even within the county. I found rates in the Oklahoma panhandle, panhandle. It was for a very small section, but it was $9 an acre. And, uh, so it varies, and in Prowers County, it is varying between 13 and about 32. But even at 32, it's still not very, it's still a ridiculous rate considering today's environment inflation and fuel and repairs and, you know, on, it can go on and on. Uh, and especially when you're signing up for a 15-year contract, you know.
Do you, you have to pay property taxes here for that?
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Ma'am, will these letters be forwarded to senators and the representatives?
With your permission, I'm gonna send it as far and wide as I can to, as, uh, all of the, uh, definitely to the United States Secretary of Agriculture and the FSA executives. But yes, I am trying to keep our Colorado elected officials informed of what's happening here. And, um, even others in other states, there is a senator of Montana, John Tester, who is, uh, he's a farmer, and I've made sure that I, I'm getting word to him because he understands probably much better than a lot of them that what I'm, what this means.
Take a motion, we have the mayor sign the letter.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion in a second to allow the mayor to sign the letter. Were there any final questions? Did you have some modifications or edits? So how about we do that pending?
Yes.
Emery's review?
Yes. Um, nothing that I'm editing would change the content of the letter.
Do we need attorney to review it too, or the letter, just the letter of support?
Just CC him the final.
We'll just CC you in.
As long as you're not saying anything malicious.
Yeah.
Anything terrible.
No.
Yeah, grammatical.
Well, it's gonna have red marks.
Yeah, Emery's are.
I wish I had one of you.
She does our checking and all of that. So we have a motion in a second to approve the mayor to sign a letter of support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing this to our attention. Next item on the agenda is a new coffee machine agreements. This was initiated by Thomas Sanchez, our IT Director. Thomas, would you like to speak on these?
Sure. Evening, uh, council mayor. Uh, we currently have three machines that are out of, uh, their, their lease and they're on a month to month. They're still covered and the price hasn't changed, but what we've noticed is within the past probably two or three weeks that, uh, they've started to, I wouldn't say fall apart, but they've needed repairs that they've never needed before. We've had a couple, one of them fell, hard drive in our administration was unable to print on this floor for two, three days. Uh, we had one downstairs that wouldn't print color properly. And although our vendor made good and they repaired them, but these are just.
Band-aids.
Yeah, they're band-aids. Yeah, they're, they're just starting to, I wouldn't say fall apart, but they're requiring more and more maintenance that they didn't within their period, their, their lease period. So, uh, we have three up right now. One of them is the administration. One of them is downstairs in the building codes, which we all print to. And one over at Public Works. Uh, the directors and the department heads have checked off on all of them. And it is my request to allow council to have the mayor sign the three lease agreements.
Someone?
Hi, Doc. Just that we need an addendum on it for an appropriation clause, given that it's over a year.
Oh, that's right.
Okay.
Okay.
With that modification.
On here it says, uh, equipment payment, this was $214.41. Is that a month?
Yes. The costs for the monthly lease of just to have the machine have gone up a little bit, but the prints, price per print has gone down, at least on the second one. And on the first one, uh, quite a bit as well. So we have the two in the admin and in the public works of the same size machine. The cost has gone up for the monthly lease, but the cost per print has gone down. So, and I run the numbers on mine. If it's the new cost between this month and last month with the new machine, it's the difference between $120 and $117 with the new machine.
So we have a motion in a second to approve?
Who's second?
Who's seconding?
I'll second.
Okay. So now we have a motion in a second. Uh, any final questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you. I'll get you that addendum.
Thank you. All right. Next item is the agreement for reimbursement of education and training. It's initiated by Kyle Miller, our chief. Um, Kyle?
This is the second time we've done one of these. Um, we did one with Christian Folk, uh, last fall. What this is, is this is, we pay for the officers to go to the academy, uh, pay them a wage while we're there. They can then guarantee us two years of employment. Um, if they don't, then it's prorated on how they pay it back. They lay within six months a year prior to the two-year mark. We're, we're kinda like every other police department in America, struggling to find people to come in and, uh, work for us. And it's just, I don't know if it's political climate or what it is, nobody seems to wanna get involved in law enforcement anymore. So I'm asking for this as an incentive, um, for us to hire a couple of new candidates, good candidates. We've already done background checks on them. They're checked out. I just have one hired on as a police recruit at this point. I'm just asking for council's approval to enter into this agreement and allow the mayor to sign it.
Kyle, is this the same agreement that we used last time?
Just different names and dates.
Different names and dates. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Rob, did you wanna add anything or?
No.
No?
Just in the budget.
Yes, it is. They're down enough officers, they have been all year, that they have it in their budget.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve. Accept. Any final questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is to enter into contract with Griffin RMC LLC for ambulance billing. This is initiated by Chief Burkhardt, but it looks like, uh, we have. Michelle here?
Hi, Mayor. I'm Michelle Maniello. I'm the clerk for the department. Debbie, Chief Marcus.
So, um, the agreement that we currently have, we're being charged about 10% and we are struggling with that company for information. This all started around COVID. They were bought out by a larger corporation. Since then, we've had issues getting correspondence back for them and getting reports from them to do our side of billing. Michelle struggles on a weekly basis. She struggles with Kristen. Kristen needs information that can't be provided to her. Um, it's been quite the headache. Michelle has put forth a ton of effort and energy into finding a new company. Um, we've sat down with a couple of them and talked to them and we found this Griffin RMC to be about the best deal we can find. They're wanting 8% of what is brought in, correct, Kristen?
It's what's collected.
What's collected. The other company wasn't, I think it was 10 or 11%
Of what we bill.
Of what was billed and not collected. So we would like to go with this RM, or Griffin RMC and give them a shot at billing for our ambulance for us.
Some of the problems I've had is, um, patients calling that got sent to collections that didn't even receive a bill. So that is non-acceptable to me. I don't think anybody should be sent over to collections for something that they didn't even receive a first-time bill on. So anyway, that's what we've been struggling with since they have sold and that's been two years. So.
They didn't have any incentive to follow up after they billed.
We, this, this company now has an incentive to help us collect.
We have to give them, uh, what did we decide, 60 days? 60 days notice.
Day notice required to terminate that other contract.
The other contracts. We'd like to enter into this one in the 60 days if you approve it from tonight.
Have you talked to any other departments that are utilizing this company?
Michelle has.
Yes. They, they have, they have nothing but praise to say about them.
Perfect.
Yes.
And we met with them, um, Chief Burkhardt and Michelle and I, um, visited with this company on the phone and it was just night and day from the service that we were receiving. Um, a prime example was today, um, we were looking at the contract and I needed a change on it. Um, she called the lady and within 10 or 15 minutes, we had the change in the contract back. So very prompt, very knowledgeable. Um, we were having trouble getting revenues and things from the old company. I mean, it, it, it's, it's been a desperate situation.
The reports have been.
And the reports are horrible. They changed completely. We didn't have access to information I needed, information Michelle needed. Nobody, we couldn't get calls back, emails back, um, go to our website and look for what you need. I mean, it was just, it was, it's just gotten to where it's horrible. They're back east somewhere. And so they just, our small department, I guess, we didn't really matter anymore. But this lady was originally from Colorado, started in Colorado, but they moved to Texas because of the weather. So she's very familiar with departments and that's all they do is vary AMS billing. So they have certain staff members that are designated for certain tasks. And she is a ball of fire. So I am, I was 100% impressed with the interview and Michelle called their references and, and like she said, everybody has, um, just given nothing but praise. So, um, we're excited, um, to have a new opportunity to get better service, um, more, more prompt payments. Um, you know, ambulance suffers as it is, so we need all the revenue we can get. And with the 2% cheaper than we're already receiving at this point, um, it, that's a blessing as well. So. And like we said, it's.
More 2%, though, right? Cause the others were doing off of.
Billing.
What you billed, not what you collected. So there should be a higher percentage.
The one that we're currently in is 10% of what we collect. But the other company, the only other company we found in Colorado was 10 or 11% of what they bill. And see, we can bill like $850, let's say for a run and Medicare, we may get 90, but they would bill us on that 850 and not the 90 they collected. So there is no way we can afford that. So, um, that one just got taken off the table right away. And that was the only other company we could find in Colorado. So.
And they have a good turnaround rate as far as from the time the report's filed and it goes into their, their bill to the customer timeframe?
Yes. Yes.
Michelle, the company you're with right now, is that the one that sent me a bill saying it needed to be paid in full a week?
Yes. Yes.
I just gave her my insurance information. She turned it in right away, and I got a bill from them saying it must be paid in full.
Okay.
It's just the service has been...
The service was planned.
Did you have a question, Lance?
Yes. Just based on the contract for this company, is there anything else that you can see that we would need to include for services that they should provide us compared to what the other company was providing?
Well, the way I understood when I spoke with her is she would tailor the reports to what Kristen, myself are needing. The only thing that I could see is when we take, when we make a run and we don't transport the patient, I did ask them about this. Right now, we have in place a $100 fee, which is, doesn't really even cover our expenses. But that might be something that we could adjust later. I don't know.
And she said they'd be willing to just, all it would entail would just be creating a new code on their behalf, and they would be more than willing. They could do it instantly.
But I didn't see anything different. I mean, they basic, basic life support, advanced life support, and then, you know, I really didn't see anything, Lance, extra that needed to be in there.
So with the motion, if we were to approve this tonight, would we need to do some kind of approval to sign a letter to exit the previous contract as well, or?
Well, so I think you want to approve this agreement with the effective date, start date being 60 days from tomorrow, and then direction to terminate the contract, a notice letter of intent to terminate things to the company that we're contracted with currently.
Okay, so two-part. So moved. And they'll be able to get the system up over the other system so that you can just ride right in?
Hopefully, it'll just, you know, kind of be on top of it and a smooth transition.
Failure to give the proper notice can result in two months' worth of whatever the average spent the last six months, what they've been receiving. So it's important to send a notice for that purpose. As well as, if you don't want to be sending, you don't want the effective date of this contract to be at the same time as the current contract is going in place, because then we're not sending information, sending double information. It would just be a big issue, so.
So do we need to add time to that? So we have time to ensure that they have a certified copy or?
So, I mean...
A certified receipt?
To avoid a gap where we don't have anyone doing billing service. I think as long as we get the letter sent tomorrow, it says 60 days. So I would hold them to that, 60 days. So as long as we can send them the letter tomorrow, which we will, then that notice piece is met, they have 60 days to complete their billing portion for us.
Okay.
We'd be done.
Okay. Well, that's why I was asking if we needed 80 days, because it'd be safe. But...
Well, my concern is having a gap, someone being able to take that. They say 60 days is what is required, so I would...
Just stick with 60 days. Okay.
Can the new company start at any date, or does it have to be like the first or 15th of a month, or are they good with?
I don't believe so. She was, she's, she has emailed me every week. So I think they could start anytime, as soon as we tell them yes.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions?
So we can overlap? Does the other ones get rid of their billing, and we start with the new company once these contracts signed with it?
Right. Well, we want to start the new contract 60 days from tomorrow, and the old contract will terminate 60 days from tomorrow.
But can we, we can overlap? Can we?
We don't want to do that.
We don't want to do that, no.
Okay.
We also don't want to run afoul, on a breach of their current contract, because we're not sending them billing.
So we just hold all the billing until we get done?
No, they'll, so they, sorry, they will continue to process claims for 60 days, and at that point, then it'll end.
They'll be in service for...
We're just giving them the notice of termination with the 60 days.
And there may be a little bit of a gap.
Last two weeks of the contract, what do you do with the billing?
Keep on sending it.
Send it to, to the old company.
But they got 60 days to get it done.
Everything will go in, and they'll, what it says in there is that if we want a report, which we have to pay for, it'll have a finalized report for what I assume is left over and needs to continue to be billed, or where they're at with their processing for the most recent bills that have been sent.
And then she can resend to the new company.
All right.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second. No more questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just like to say thank you to Michelle. She has done a fantastic job through all of the struggles, finding a new company, calling references. She's done an amazing job. So I just want to give her a shout out, and thank you, Marcus, for stepping in tonight and taking over.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the CCOG MOU for the flowerpots. This is introduced by Morgan Alba, our Community Development Director. Morgan?
How do we do that?
We did that for the...
For the LRA.
Hello. So basically, yes, same thing. The city has been awarded a $5,000 grant from CCOG to order new flowerpots to replace the ones that have been damaged or broken. The city will match the grant with $6,187 for a total cost of $11,187 to complete the project.
Just to clarify, the city won't do the $6,187, will it? URA will?
Yes, the URA.
Or the whole district, yeah. Okay. And that's what we approved earlier in the URA meeting.
Right.
I move, we approve the MOU and have the mayor sign it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any final questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is merchant agreement with KHI, or KH Inc., for air card services at the airport. This was initiated by Kristen?
Yes. When we took over the airport, we had entered into an agreement with KHI in April of '21. They process our US government air cards for fuel and other products at the airport. They're the card processors for those government cards. They were awarded the government contract again, so they need us to update our agreement with them reflecting that. And so this is the agreement that you have in front of you, and I'm just asking that the agreement be approved and allow the mayor to sign so that we can stay working with those air cards for the government entities that stop out at the airport.
Okay.
I move, we approve the agreement, allow the mayor to sign, and treasurer to submit the agreement electronically.
I'll second that. Here we have a motion and a second. Any final questions?
No issue with it. Similar contract that we had with your daughter. So we just have to maintain the contract, so cover expenses that go over.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is city audit engagement letter with R Farmer LLC. This is brought in by our city treasurer, Kristen Schwartz, as well.
Yes, we've been engaged with R Farmer LLC for the last three years, and we'd just like to continue that relationship with him. We're very pleased. I laid a letter on your, or an email from Hussein and Lisa, which also work with me on, through the audit, just their recommendation that we continue this engagement with him. It's just night and day, the service that we get, the questions that we get answered, the guidance that we get, does a thorough audit, knows the city of Lamar. So we'd just like to continue that relationship, and that engagement letter is in front of you.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
So this is a three-year contract?
Yeah, well, it's an engagement letter. Yes, basically. It would cover the years if we so choose.
You also had a letter of support from Lisa Dedman?
Yes, and Hussein.
More light and power.
Make a motion to accept R Farmer's city's audit account.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract.
Right, mayor, and at the time, whatever.
I think the mayor and I have to sign it, is the way that was.
Okay. Any final questions? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay.
Thank you.
Authorization for check signing is agenda item number eight. This is initiated by the city clerk. Linda?
So this is a bank resolution for Frontier Bank and GN Bank. For the council, I'm having to do this because our city treasurer decided she needed to change her name. So I have to have all these signature cards filled out.
Okay.
And I'm asking approval to do that.
So moved.
Here we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to approve bank resolution for the Lamar Utility Board check signing. So this would be the same thing with the Lamar Utility Board. Is that correct?
Correct. Because Lamar Utility Board, all five of their members can sign, so I have to do different resolutions. But again, it's due to the fact that I need to change city treasurer's name.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. The next item on the agenda is an executive session. We don't have any decisions coming out of the executive session. However, I will leave it open for any miscellaneous items. Were there any questions that we needed to address online or anything of that nature? No? Okay. Let's see, any miscellaneous items for the council? Did you want to go over anything before we move into executive session?
No, sir.
Okay. Seeing none, we will, I just need a motion to move into executive session, and then we can proceed with that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to proceed into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on a specific legal question under Colorado revised statutes, section 4, 402, 4B. Any final questions?
2464024...
246402, okay.
For the purpose of receiving legal advice related to the election.
Okay. Thank you for that. All right. Any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, so we will move into our executive session. There'll be no decisions coming out of the executive session. So we will close the meeting out here for our audience. Thank you for joining us, and we look forward to seeing you at the next meeting.